Okay, it is just after 1:00. This is the City Council, Library and Observatory Board, Housing Authority, Housing Authority Board, and the City Council representing the Redevelopment Successor Agency. This is a regular meeting, and it is Thursday, May 21st, and it is just after 1:00 PM. And let's call this meeting to order. And let's all please stand for the flag salute.
I pledge allegiance to the flag. It is a testament to the republic we serve, one nation under God, indivisible, with liberty and justice for all.
Thank you. Kristy, would you please do roll call?
Certainly. Councilmember Kite? Councilmember Kite? Councilmember Kite, are you there?
Are we ready for roll call?
Yes. Can you hear me? Councilmember Kite? Councilmember Smotrich?
I don't think they're hearing us. Jason, can you figure out what's going on?
Yes, hold on one second. Here we go. We're live.
Okay, sorry about that. You weren't hearing us here if you were on the phone. We just finished the flag salute, and we are now doing the roll call. Kristy, would you please call the roll?
Councilmember Kite?
Hi, this is Richard Kite, and I'm glad to be here.
Hi, Councilmember Smotrich?
Councilmember Smotrich is here.
Councilmember Townsend?
Townsend is here.
Mayor Protem Wile?
Here.
And Mayor Hobart?
Here.
Thank you. And we also have our city attorney, Steve Quintanilla, on the phone as well. Thank you for joining us, Steve.
I am here. We're glad to be here.
For those of you on the phone, if you wish to speak on an item or during a non-agenda public comment, you may do so by pressing *9 on your telephone. By pressing *9, that will alert us here that you would like to speak on an item, and we will unmute your phone line. So we are now moving on to non-agenda public comment. This is an opportunity for a member of the public to speak on an issue that is not on today's agenda. And I do have one speaker card for somebody that is here in person. But again, those of you on the phone, if you would like to make a non-agenda public comment, you may do so now by pressing *9 on your telephone, and I will call on you. But first, let's do the public comments that are for the people that are here in person. So the first speaker card I have is Wally Melendez.
and we, the people. So thanks to the Brown Act that I get this opportunity to make an address. So getting back to my, to one of my subjects, yes, education. Why? Because as you know, we were caught blindsided by a horrible disease, virus, a vi- virus. It takes somebody like a piano player that starts to learn biology at an early age to understand what a virus is and how you can keep it from killing people almost instantly. A virus that who knows has been around for maybe millions of years hiding in a bat, comes out and attacks the world, the entire world. Takes education to know that. So what do we got here? What do we got here in the Cahuila Valley? We got a little old, two-year little college. We need a Harvard in the Cahuila Valley. We got so many millionaires that live in the Cahuila Valley. They could all donate to have a four-year college that will get our kids, our talented kids into medical school, virology school, epidemiology school. Education, knowledge. My people are getting destroyed for lack of knowledge.
Thank you, Wally. Before we move to the phone, is there anyone else here in person that did not fill out a yellow card that would like to make a non-agenda public comment at this time? Okay, seeing none here in the audience, we do have somebody on the phone that would like to make a non-agenda public comment. Again, those on the phone, you may make a non-agenda public comment now by pressing *9. And so, moving to those on the telephone, your number, if your telephone number ends in 9637, you are now unmuted, and please state your name for the record and make your public comment.
Yes, hello, this is Brad Anderson. I live in the city of Rancho Mirage. I wanted to speak on a few topics today. First one was the lessons, but I'm not going to go there. So anyway, I'm going to go with the mandated orders. On May 12th, apparently, the city manager mandated that face coverings should be worn in all essential businesses and city all properties in the city. And I have an issue with that because that is a mandate, and it was, I imagine it was applied because of the directions from the Board of Supervisors and what they did. But either way, I think that should be a volunteer basis because what happened is you put all the city businesses that they have to comply with this requirement. So even if they don't want to, they have to, to remain open. And that's an issue, and especially when there's no hard evidence that dense, heavy face coverings provide any protection against any viruses. And we know that's too true, and I know that's to be true anyway. So I would hope that you would look at that really, really, really hard and reconsider that motion and/or execute the order because, you know, you do have, well, actually, it's complete control, really, and the city is, can be held harmless and from prosecution because of this, and this is an issue with me. And just to go with the agenda, too, just to participate in this meeting, I had to contact the city to get this phone number and password, and all that should be really printed on the agenda because people, people aren't going to always go through the motions to get information to participate in the public's business. So that's an issue I have. And one last thing is the mosquitoes. As you probably know, the valley knows, St. Louis sepsitis was detected out in the East Valley, actually, La Quinta area right there at the end, next to La Quinta, anyway. And that's, that's an ongoing thing with the vector control district, and I know, well, actually, you have, the city manager sits on that board as a trustee, and I'm sure he's given the council reports, but I hope that he can give the city or the residents of the city reports, too, of the increasing activity. And of course, you guys oppose to raise assessments or raise taxes on everybody again this year. This is really bad timing, so. And that's all I have to say on this topic. Thank you very much, and have a good day.
Thank you, Mr. Anderson. Is there anyone else on the phone that would like to make a non-agenda public comment? Now is the time to do so by pressing *9. Okay, seeing no one else that would like to make a comment, we'll close non-agenda public comments, and we will move to council comments. And so, Councilmember Townsend, do you have a comment today?
Yes, I do. Thank you very much. There have been some misconceptions made lately concerning the Rancho Mirage Historic Preservation Program. So let's set the record straight. I am proud to say that the city of Rancho Mirage is one of the first cities in the Riverside County, if not actually the first city in the county, to provide a property tax incentive to property owners who voluntarily participate in the city's historic preservation program. Under the city's historic preservation program, a property owner of a property that may be historically significant is offered a property tax rebate under the California law, and that is known as the Mills Act. This is recognized as, and I quote, "the single most important economic development incentive program in California for the restoration and preservation of qualified historic buildings by private property owners." And I will say that's unquote, and we were the first ones to initiate this. Under the city's historic preservation program, property owners could realize substantial property tax savings of between 40% and 60% each year. The city of Rancho Mirage did not have to offer this incentive, but it did so to encourage owners of historically significant properties to voluntarily participate in the city's historic preservation program. So saying that we do not cherish our history is completely incorrect. I think it is critical to point out that the city's historic preservation program is voluntary. I'll say it again, voluntary. This means that if a property owner does not want his or her property listed as a historic site under the city's program, in the end, the property owner can just say no. It is as simple as that. One does not even have to ask a constitutional scholar that property rights is a fundamental right that every American possesses under the United States Constitution. This applies even to those who are willing to prohibit other property owners from remodeling, renovating, or even demolishing their own houses they paid for and own. This is a fundamental American right that is preserved and protected under the city's historic preservation program. The Thunderbird Height property was not listed as historical by the current owners or the past owners through the history of the property. Of course, there is nothing to prevent any organization, such as some of the local preservation organizations, from raising private funding to purchase any home or property they believe is historic, if they can convince the owners to sell it to them, that is. That is another freedom provided under our Constitution. The bottom line here is I just want everyone to know that the city of Rancho Mirage values its historic past, but it also values private property rights. This is a delicate balance, people, which is the reason why the city made its historic preservation program voluntary and offers an economic incentive to encourage property owners to voluntarily participate in the city's historic preservation program. Let me say that other cities have had different ways, of course, to approach this issue, but I take my oath very seriously when I swear to uphold and defend the rights afforded to every American under the United States Constitution sitting on this council. In closing, if any property owner wishes to participate in our city historic preservation program, there is a very simple process to apply. And if your property meets the eligibility requirements, your property, too, could be declared a historic resource, which could make your property eligible for a significant tax rebate. Those of you who are interested, you may apply and call, and I encourage you to contact Rancho Mirage City Hall at 760-324-4511. That's 760-324-4511. And your questions, and you'll be guided to the proper channels of placing your application. Also, a footnote in closing, you can also apply at any time to have the designation dismissed. Thank you for your time.
Thank you. Councilmember Smotrich?
Thank you, Isaiah. Yes, I do have a comment because I just wanted to make a brief comment about an email I received regarding, and I quote, "The paranoia hysteria over one drive-through," unquote. This email references an unknown blogger who accuses the city of, quote, "illegal background, backroom dealings," unquote, over the In-N-Out Burger project. So, to help clear the air on this issue, I would like our city attorney, Steve Quintanilla, to offer any comments he may have on this issue. Steve, thank you very much.
Oh, okay. Thank you. Ms. Smotrich? You know, I was a little disturbed when I heard that some blogger was accusing the city of being engaged in some illegal backroom dealing. That really concerns me because that implies, that infers that the city council did something that was not proper. And I can assure you that everything that the city has been involved with and everything the city council has done has been proper, and we, that's been reinforced by the court's ruling on this particular matter. But instead of backroom dealings, I got to tell you, there is a backroom story about this whole issue, and it's a story that not often is told, particularly by the city attorney in the midst of pending litigation. But I think because of some of the concerns that some of the, some of the council's constituents have expressed about some of these conspiracy theories that are being raised by a very, very small group of people in the community, I think it's probably appropriate this time to kind of let everybody in on this story that is being told right now and should be concluded sometime soon. So if you can bear with me, I'd just like to take just a few minutes to kind of run through this story, which all began back in October 29th, 2019. Now, that was the date that a group called Save Rancho Mirage, it consists of some residents who I'm not fully aware of. I know that Dr. Joe Hurstberg is one of the members, and Steve Jaffe is one of the members, and there's a few other people that I am aware of who are members of this group. And this is not to disparage them in any way, but they are part of the story. So on October 29th, 2019, the city was basically served with a lawsuit challenging the city council's determination that the In-N-Out project was exempt under our California Environmental Quality Act, which are our environmental laws. Well, whenever a lawsuit is filed under SEQA, there is an obligation on behalf of the attorney who represents the petitioners, in this case, it's Bruce Bauer, to request that a hearing be scheduled. And a hearing has to be scheduled within 90 days after the date that the petition or the lawsuit was filed. In this case, there was an obligation, a legal obligation, for the attorney for Save Rancho Mirage to notify the court and schedule a hearing by January 27th, 2020, in this case. Well, that didn't happen. And so let me explain what happened because of that failure on behalf of Save Rancho Mirage's attorney. So here comes around January 30th. On January 30th, at that point, I gather that In-N-Out had just been really exasperated with any attempt to try to settle this matter, and so was the city. So basically, at that time, we had, we had reached an impasse on any possible settlement because it was clear to everyone involved that the Save Rancho Mirage people who had sued the city over this were not interested in an environmental impact report. Rather, it was clear to everyone that they just did not want a drive-through restaurant located at that particular site. Well, the purpose of the environmental lawsuit was, was basically focused on requiring the city to approve and certify an environmental impact report. So with that knowledge, with that knowledge, we received a request, we, meaning the city, received a request from In-N-Out's attorney requesting that the city accept their request to terminate the development agreement so that they can pursue with preparing an environmental impact report. And again, we did that without any knowledge whatsoever that the case was not, that the case basically was subject to dismissal by the court. So on February 3rd, that is the day that the city, the city council was presented with a resolution that basically accepted In-N-Out's election to terminate the development agreement. And again, because it was a development agreement, either party had the discretion or the right to request termination of the development agreement. And naturally, if the developer wants to terminate a development agreement and there's been no consideration on behalf of the city that has been provided, then it made sense at that point to recommend, and that was a recommendation that came from the city attorney's office, that the council adopt the resolution that rescinds the termination, rescinds the development agreement. Well, that happened on February 3rd. So there was a resolution that was adopted that indicated the city's intent to terminate the development agreement and to also terminate all the associated entitlements. Well, lo and behold, I'm sitting in my office, looking at my computer, and on February 6th, this is actually less than, less than 72 hours after the city council made the decision to accept the rescission of the development agreement, I received an email from the court. And this is from Judge Rusty Moore's courtroom. He is the judge that's been assigned to oversee the SEQA case involving the In-N-Out case. And in that notice, in that notice that I received, and I was, frankly, I was very surprised at this because it was just less than 72 hours later, the email said Judge Moore has reviewed this case and ordered the following. The attached order to show cause why petition should not be dismissed due to petitioners at Save Rancho Mirage' failure to file a timely request for a hearing. And then an OSB in order to show cause why the petition shouldn't be dismissed was scheduled for March 9th, 2020, at 10:00 AM. And the order went on to say, and I'm going to quote for it, "that this case has been brought pursuant to the California Environmental Quality Act, Public Resources Code Section 21167.4, provides that in any action or proceeding alleging noncompliance with SEQA, the petitioner shall request a hearing within 90 days from the date of filing of the petition or it shall be subject to dismissal on the court's own motion." So this is the court's decision to dismiss the case. The city, neither the city nor the developer requested that the case be dismissed. The court, the court email goes on to say that the court hereby takes judicial notice of its record in the above titled case, which is the Save Rancho Mirage case. In doing so, the court notes that petitioner, Save Rancho Mirage, initiated this litigation by filing a petition for writ of mandate on or about October 29th, 2019. And the court says, as of the date of this order, remember, it's March 6th, as the date of this order, 100 days have elapsed since the filing of the petition. So this order was issued, this notice was issued 10 days after the 90-day period in which the request for a hearing should have been submitted. Now, lots of people may say, well, that's a harmless mistake. Well, according to law, it is not a harmless mistake. It's a resultant automatic dismissal of the case. Well, the court didn't decide that day that the case was dismissed. The court instead set a hearing. It set a hearing for, let me see, the hearing was scheduled for March, March 9th. So the court set up the hearing for March 9th, and the parties are advised that, you know, unless you have some sort of counterargument to this, if you do, then you better show up on March 9th and try to convince the judge that the judge is mistaken in his belief that the petitioner, Save Rancho Mirage, did not miss that deadline. Well, instead of filing a response to this proposed dismissal, there was nothing. The only thing that was filed in response to this proposed dismissal was that Save Rancho Mirage's attorney, Bruce Bauer, filed a motion for attorney's speech. Why, I don't understand. And so, the Friday before the hearing on the order to show cause, this has to do with the proposed dismissal of the case with prejudice, the law provides, and the local court rules provide, that if anyone contests the tentative ruling of the court, which was to dismiss the Save Rancho Mirage case with prejudice, that they had to notify the court by the end of that day, the end of that Friday, which was March 6th, that they were planning on showing up to submit oral argument. On March 6th, nothing happens. On Saturday, I checked my emails, nothing's happened. I checked the court's website, no one's requested oral argument. On Sunday, I checked my emails, I get no notice that somebody's going to submit oral argument. I checked the court's site, there's nothing there. On the morning of the hearing on March 9th, I'm thinking, well, I did not hear or get any notice from Bruce Bauer, the attorney representing Save Rancho Mirage, that he's going to show up for the hearing to submit oral argument on this proposed dismissal of the Save Rancho Mirage case. But I decided to drive the hundred and some miles to get there just in case. And so, as I was sitting in the parking lot at the courthouse in Marietta, I receive a phone call from Bruce Bauer, the attorney for Save Rancho Mirage, submitting an unreasonable, ridiculous settlement proposal, ridiculous settlement proposal. My response to Mr. Bauer was, well, wait a minute now, I'm about ready to walk into a courtroom that you did not submit a request for oral argument, which means that the judge is tentative ruling to dismiss your case against the city of Rancho Mirage and In-N-Out Burger is going to be dismissed. Why would I even suggest to anyone that the, that the city or anyone entertained your unreasonable demand for a settlement proposal when your case is going to probably, and most likely, and should be by law, be dismissed within the hour? So I walk into the courtroom, and following me in the courtroom is Bruce Bauer, the attorney for Save Rancho Mirage. I make a note to the judge that I objected to his presence because he didn't properly or legally submit requests for oral argument, and because he did not, then the tentative ruling to dismiss the case against the city in In-N-Out Burger should be dismissed with prejudice. Well, I went ahead and consented to oral argument at that point because I immediately saw that Mr. Bauer was not going in the right direction with his argument, in that he was insisting that if there was any dismissal, that it was critical that the judge the judge indicate whether the dismissal was for prejudice or without prejudice. The significance between the two, or the distinction between the two, is that if a case is dismissed without prejudice, that means that the plaintiff or the petitioner in this particular case would have an opportunity to remedy the defect that resulted in the dismissal of the case. However, if the case is dismissed with prejudice, that means that the petitioner or plaintiff is precluded, is foreclosed of the opportunity of doing anything that may fit their complaint or petition. In other words, dismissal with prejudice meant the case was dead and could not be revised. So after that order was issued, the order dismissing the State Ranch and Mirage case against the city and In-N-Out with prejudice, did Mr. Bauer nonetheless try to request a hearing? No, he did not. He did not try to request a hearing. He provided no proof whatsoever to the court that any attempt to request a hearing within that 90-day period was even attempted. Nothing. Zero. Instead, he filed a motion to request that the same judge who dismissed the case with prejudice to reverse his decision. Unbelievable. Unbelievable. And even their issue with the motion for attorney's fees, I have lots of questions about, you know, first of all, I do not believe they're entitled to attorney's fees, and that's going to be argued before the court. And I have lots of questions about some of his entries and some of the billings that he's attempted to charge his client, Dr. Hirschberg. Those issues are all going to be flushed out in the court documents, and I encourage everyone who's interested in the backstory of this case to take a look at those. Because there's a lot of backstory to be told about this case. So we have a hearing that's scheduled at the end of June, which is going to, the judge is going to look at this ridiculous motion to have the judge reverse his decision for the petitioner's attorney, Bruce Bauer, for missing a critical deadline that killed the case, and a motion for their attorney's fees, which I believe they are not entitled to. And it's very questionable as to many of the fees that were charged to Dr. Joe Hirschberg as a client, whether or not those are appropriate to be recovered in the context of this litigation. So there's a lot of that backroom story that will shed some light on these accusations that there is some sort of illicit backroom deal going on. There is none. Everything about this case, everything that's been filed with the court, everything that I've sworn under oath and other parties have sworn under oath are all set forth in the record at the Southwest West Courthouse in Marietta. And I encourage anyone, before you write a story, any of you bloggers, before you write a story about this case, I encourage you to do your due diligence as a responsible reporter and take a look at all of that correspondence and all those pleadings that have been filed with the court. So in a nutshell, there is no backroom dealings here. None whatsoever. At the time that the city council was recommended by the city attorney's office to accept the rescission of the development agreement, at that time, no one, including State Ranch and Mirage, had any clue that their attorney screwed up and missed a filing deadline. On that date, no one had that idea. Less than 72 hours later, we learned from the judge himself that there was a defect and the filing of their case was going to be dismissed with prejudice, meaning there is no case in the first place for us to be concerned about. So I'm hoping by the end of June, we'll have a definitive answer, particularly on the issue for a motion for attorney's fees. Again, I'm confident that we'll prevail on that case because there was no case in the first place. Everybody was under the misunderstanding, and nobody ever expected an attorney to miss a deadline like that. No one would expect that. But it happened in this case, and that's the backroom story. I hope that answers everybody's question.
Steve, that was a great presentation.
Thank you so much, Steve.
Very good, Steve.
Oh, well, I'm just telling you as it is.
Yes, and I think that shows a lot of clarity to any concerns that have been raised.
Yeah, and I just think, just as a final note, I just, you know, it's very unfair, and I'm speaking to everyone out there, and I'm not trying to be condescending or disrespectful of the process. You know, I encourage everyone to ask questions, but I just only ask that the simple thing to do, particularly in our democratic process, is that we tell the truth and we speak out the truth before we level accusations that somebody is being untrue.
Steve, I think it's great that you're doing this, really, and setting the record straight, really.
You're welcome. Yeah, thank you.
Okay, Councilmember Kite, do you have a comment today?
Yes, thank you, Isaiah. This Monday, May 25th, is our country's celebration of Memorial Day. It's a day of thanks and a day to remember the love of America and all those who gave all of their for our freedom. So I'd like to take a moment and bow our heads in a moment of silence to honor our military heroes. Thank you. God bless everyone and remain safe this holiday weekend.
Thank you, Richard.
Thank you. Mayor Pro Tim Wile, do you have a comment today?
Yes, I'll merely tag on to something that Richard had said. It's particularly meaningful to me, being a United States Navy veteran, to honor those that have provided freedom for us and to be able to enjoy the fruits of our wonderful country. So I too bow to those that made the ultimate sacrifice. I wish everyone a very safe Memorial Day and thank everyone for their contributions. Thank you, Isaiah.
Thank you. Mayor Hobart?
Thank you. About a week ago, I received an email from Dr. Mary Wilson, and this is substantially what she said, not editing, just shortening it a few words. Please remember that masks and face coverings are required in our city. Science is very clear about their benefits, and while they do not replace social distancing, coverings over the nose and mouth are essential tools in combating a second wave of COVID infections. We cannot abandon our self-discipline to prioritize money over people. That was her message, and keep in mind that many are predicting that there's going to be a second wave sometime this coming six, eight, 10 months, and we want to be prepared for it. And one of the ways to prepare for it is to make sure that when you're outside, you're wearing a mask or other substantial and effective face covering. Okay, that takes care of that, Stephen, and we have the manager comments.
Yeah, thank you. I just would like to comment quickly. Under the state of emergency order that the city and all other governments are operating under right now on May 12th, I did issue two emergency orders. The first order that was issued was requiring face coverings when inside any essential business, and an essential business is any business that is open. So anytime you're inside a business that is open, you are required in Ranch and Mirage to wear a face covering. The second order issued on May 12th was extending our moratorium on short-term rentals through June 30, 2020. And the basis behind that is our resorts are still not open to the public yet per the governor's health and safety orders, and short-term rentals operate much like many hotels, and they fall under the same rules. So the city is enforcing its moratorium on short-term rentals. Now, item number 12 on today's agenda is, the process is, when I issue an order, at the next available council meeting, it is the city council that either approves, modifies, or rejects those orders. So they are not in place by me indefinitely. They are only in place until the city council at their next scheduled meeting has the opportunity to review these items publicly. So part of Agenda Item Number 12 today is the council's review of those orders. So there is a checks and balance process here, even under an emergency order, where I, as the city manager, can institute an order, but it is also followed up and reviewed and subject to modification by the city council. And so that is what will take place today. I know there's been a little bit of confusion around the process of how that works when orders are issued. It does ultimately end up with the city council like it will here today for item number 12. And that concludes my comment. And so the next item we have is the minutes from the May 7, 2020 regular meeting.
Move approval. Second.
Okay, we have a motion and a second. Kristi, will you please do the roll call vote?
Can I know exactly who made the motion in the second?
Yes, that was me, Richard.
And Townsend, second.
Okay, thank you.
Sorry, Kristi.
That's okay. I'll go ahead with the roll call vote. Councilmember Kite?
Yes.
Councilmember Smotrich?
Yes.
Councilmember Townsend?
Yes.
Mayor Pro Tim Wile?
Yes.
And Mayor Hobart?
Yes.
The motion carries 5-0. Thank you.
Thank you, Kristi. We will move on to the consent calendar. There are seven items for the council's consideration today. Item number one is to waive the full reading of all ordinances introduced or adopted pursuant to this agenda. Item number two is the final acceptance of the citywide street striping project. Item number three is the final acceptance of the traffic signal and safety lighting painting project. Item number four is the final acceptance of the assisted hearing loop installation at the library and observatory. And I would like to take a second to acknowledge and thank again the Bartish Family Foundation. Much of that project cost was covered by their generous donation, which enabled us to expand the project throughout the whole library and observatories. So we do many programs in that facility in all rooms, and so we were able to expand the hearing loop technology to all the rooms because of the Bartish Family Foundation's generous donation. So thank you to them. Item number five is the receive and file of the 2019-20 Library and Observatory Foundation Board Annual Report. Item number six is contracts, and staff is requesting that contract number one on the contracts list be pulled, and we will bring that back at the next council meeting. It is not ready for council's consideration yet. So we were just seeking approval for contract number two identified on the contracts list, and item number one is being pulled and will be brought back at the next meeting. Item number seven are demands, and we are here to answer any questions.
Okay, Isaiah, I did have a question in regard to item number six, and it's on page 6-3, and it is regarding the fencing. In the first paragraph where it says background, it says sand fencing will be installed along the north side of Ramone Road in this area and along the north side of Dyna Shore Drive between Bob Hope Drive and Key Largo Avenue. My question is, is that going to be a double row of fencing or a single row of fencing? Because that is a very windy area, and there is a lot of low sand that comes out onto those streets.
Yeah, that will be a double row of sand fencing, and that is the contract that we're actually going to bring back to you next week, but it does include a double row of sand fencing.
Okay, great. Thank you.
All right, are there any members of the public that would wish to speak on one of these items? If you're on the telephone, you may alert us and speak on any of these items by pressing star nine on your telephone. Once again, that's star nine. We'll go to those that are here in person. Is there any member of the public that is here in the chamber that would like to speak on one of these items? Okay, seeing none, I'll go back to those on the telephone. Again, you would alert us by hitting star nine on your telephone, and I do not see anyone wishing to speak on any of the consent calendar items, so council, I will return to you.
I move to accept the consent calendar, Ted Wile.
And I read.
Okay, we've got a motion and a second. Kristi, will you please do the roll call vote?
Councilmember Kite?
Yes.
Councilmember Smotrich?
Yes.
Councilmember Townsend?
Yes.
Mayor Pro Tim Wile?
Yes.
Mayor Hobart?
Yes.
And motion carries 5-0.
All right, well, we will move on to our public hearing. So item number eight on our agenda is a public hearing, and this is a development agreement, case number DA 190002. And Joy Si, our associate planner, will be doing the staff report. Joy?
Thank you, and good afternoon, councilmembers. For your consideration, today is a development agreement, case number DA 190002, regarding a tentative tract map number 36620. So the development agreement for your consideration today is between the City of Ranch and Mirage and RM 38 JV LLC to extend the term of the tentative tract map to April 3, 2021, and potentially beyond if certain performance standards are met. So this tentative tract map is an 82-lot residential subdivision located adjacent to Via Josephina and Via Florencia and is situated entirely within the Section 30 specific plan. It's located between the community of Versailles and an equestrian facility, and the tentative map and the mitigated negative declaration, they were originally approved and adopted by the city council in December 2014 with an expiration date of December 2016. The city council approved two more extensions of time in 2017, which extended the term of the map until December 2019. So because the tentative map was extended for a total of three years, the project doesn't qualify for another extension of time request. Therefore, the applicant had submitted a development agreement application in order to extend the tentative map for an additional year, up to a maximum of four years, dependent on the submittal and approval of a preliminary development plan. The development agreement is subject to early termination if the map expires with no final map being recorded. So one of the reasons why the applicant decided to submit a request for a development agreement is because the project has experienced substantial delays resulting from the combination of factors such as the completion of the CVWD Water Infrastructure Project. These infrastructure improvements were completed in early 2018. But in light of these delays, the developer and the city believe it is in their best mutual interest to enter into this agreement to extend the tentative tract map current expiration date to April 3, 2021, since the project will also result in the installation of necessary public infrastructure at no cost to the taxpayers. So as part of the development agreement, the developer will develop, construct, and install all necessary street improvements, including curb and gutter along the east side of Via Josephina between Ginger Rogers Road and Secult Court to the satisfaction of city engineer in order to close the gap between the project site and the Versailles community. Just to note, this tentative tract map has been reviewed in compliance with the provisions of the California Environmental Quality Act. A mitigated negative declaration was adopted and filed in 2014, and because the development- Because the development agreement incorporates off-site improvements not included in the original scope of the mitigated negative declaration, an addendum to the mitigated negative declaration has been prepared pursuant to California Environmental Quality Act Section 15162 and 15164. The off-site improvements will not result in any new significant environmental impacts or substantially increase the severity of environmental impacts beyond those identified in the mitigated negative declaration. So in conclusion, I'd like to reiterate that this request is for the development agreement to extend the term of the tentative tract map, which was approved along with the mitigated negative declaration back in 2014. The conditions of approval and mitigation measures from the original approval still apply, and staff has not received any outside correspondence or comments regarding this request. The planning commission recommended that the city council adopt resolution number next in line, adopting an addendum to the mitigated negative declaration, and to introduce ordinance number next in line, adopting development agreement case number DA 190002 pursuant to Chapter 17, Point 56 of the Rancho Mirage Municipal Code, and three, file the filing of a notice of determination based on the addendum to the mitigated negative declaration and pursuant to the California Environmental Quality Act Section 15164. So this concludes my summary, and I'd be happy to address any questions that councilmembers may have. Thank you.
Hi, this is Dana Hobart. In the middle of this project is where the equestrian center is located, correct?
The existing equestrian facility is located adjacent to the tentative tract map. It's not in the middle of it. Yes.
Well, in the middle of the map, we're looking at adjacent to the line dividing. My question is, and I think I remember the answer from the first time this came up, the property that's going to be developed, none of it will be horse property. Is that correct?
Correct.
Okay. That's all I just wanted to be reminded.
Okay. Let's go ahead, and thank you, Joy, for the staff report. Let's go ahead and open up the public hearing. So at this point, if you are on the telephone and you'd like to speak on this item during the public hearing, please press star nine on your telephone. And before we go to the telephone, is there anyone here that is in the audience that would like to speak on this item? Okay, seeing none, I do see that we have a request on the telephone. So let's go to Jim Vaughn.
Good afternoon, mayor and honorable councilmembers. This is Jim Vaughn. I'm a land use counsel for the applicant, and just wanted to thank staff very much. Joy and Jeremy were, as usual, extremely diligent and cooperative and helpful in bringing this forward and finding a solution for everybody to help this project move forward, and as well as the assistance from Steve and Colin from the city attorney's office. So we're just very appreciative. The applicant, Graham Culp, had a conflict and couldn't appear today, but he also wanted me to share his thanks as well, and I'm here to answer any questions you might have.
Thank you. Seeing no other requests to speak, we'll close the public hearing, and I will return to the council.
Joy, this is Richard. I have a question.
Go ahead.
In your presentation, you talked about a one-year extension, and then at the same time, you talked about a four-year extension. Is this for one-year extensions?
Okay, Councilmember Kite, thank you for your question. So just to clarify, the DA is originally for an extension to April 3rd, 2021, and it is a performance-based, it's based on if they meet performance standards. So for example, the original extension is to extend the term to April 3rd, 2021, and if the developer submits a complete preliminary development plan application before that extension expires, then the term will then be extended by an additional year. And then if that preliminary development plan or PDP is approved by the city council, then it'll be extended by additional two years. So basically, the term of the development agreement will be a maximum of four years, and it can be terminated early if the tentative tract map expires with no final map being recorded.
So it's really a bonus arrangement where if the developer meets the basic guidelines or requirements, we will extend it for another year in the future?
Correct.
Yes, it's to keep the project moving. So there has to be progress in order for the extensions to move forward.
Okay. Excellent report, Joy.
Yeah, this is Townsend. Joy, I have a question with what Richard's saying and what Isaiah's saying. Are they going to be continuing to develop the infrastructure during this period, or is it just a standstill thing? What's happening?
Hi, councilmember. This is Jeremy. So as they seek a developer to do this project, once we have additional plans in and it looks like they're going to move forward, at that time, they would do the street improvements.
So that will not happen till one?
Yeah, until they have someone, well, nothing will be done before a PDP would come before you for consideration. So once a PDP is submitted and hopefully approved, at that point, they would be able to start any sort of improvements out there.
All right, thank you.
Any other questions from council?
No, I'll just make a comment. This is Ted, that I think that extending the life of the map an additional year is very much an order based upon the delays caused by the COVID-19 pandemic. It could be a terrific project. We've gone this long, and it certainly deserves to be extended.
I agree. Even the second year, if it was required, I'd be in favor of it.
Right.
Okay, if there's no other questions or comments from council, it's time for a motion.
Okay. This is Iris. I will make the motion, and it will include A, B, and C, and I will read each one in its entirety. So I move that we adopt resolution number 2020, next in order, adopting an addendum to the previously approved mitigated negative declaration regarding tentative tract map number TTM 36620 and related development agreement by and between RM 38 JV, as in Victor, LLC, and the City of Rancho Mirage, and B, introduce ordinance number, next in order, first reading, approving the statutory development agreement by and between the City of Rancho Mirage and RM 38 JV LLC, and C, approve the filing of a notice of determination based on the addendum to the mitigated negative declaration and pursuant to the California Environmental Quality Act Section 15164.
Second motion, this is Richard.
Thank you. We have a motion and a second. Christie, will you please do a roll call vote?
Councilmember Kite?
Yes.
Councilmember Smotrich?
Yes.
Councilmember Townsend?
Yes.
Mayor Pro Tim Wile?
Yes.
Mayor Hobart?
Yes.
Motion carries 5-0.
All right, we will move on to our action calendar. And item number nine on the agenda is the introduction of an ordinance that would amend various sections of the Rancho Mirage Municipal Code, which would implement the 2019 building codes as required by state law. And Jeremy Glym, our Development Services Director, will be doing this presentation. Jeremy?
Thank you, Mr. Hagerman. Thank you, mayor, members of the council. In November of last year, the city council adopted ordinances 1161 and 1162 to adopt by reference the 2019 edition of the California Building Standards Code, California Mechanical Code, and California Plumbing Code, along with certain appendices thereto. Some of the appendices, which were inadvertently included in the adopted ordinances, have not yet been adopted by the requisite state agencies, and would thus require the city to make additional findings for their adoption, which was not intended or desired by staff. So the underlying purpose of the ordinance before you today is to exclude the appendices that were not adopted by the state so that we may refile with the California Building Standards Commission, consistent with state law. That concludes my presentation, and I would be happy to answer your questions. Thank you.
All right, let's move to public comment on this item. Again, if you're on the phone, you may speak on this item by pressing star nine. And before we go to those on the phone, is there anybody here in the audience that would like to speak on this item? Seeing none, we'll go to the phone. Again, press star nine on your telephone. Seeing none, we will close the public comment, and I will turn it over to the council for comments, questions.
Kind of, this is Dana, kind of explain a little bit how it will operate during the interim when it doesn't have codes requested or required by the state.
Yeah, so we adopted, or you adopted, the 2019 edition of the building codes back in November, so that's already in effect. There were just a few appendices that were not yet adopted by the state. So there are still provisions in the California Building Code for those things, which could refer back to the 2016 edition. It's just that the current edition has not yet been adopted for those specific items. So there are still regulations and regulatory things in place so that things can get built and reviewed properly.
Great, thanks.
Okay. If there's no other questions or comments from the council, now would be the time for a motion.
All right, this is Townsend, and I'll make the motion. If you wish, that the city council introduce ordinance number, next in order, first reading, amending Sections 1504, 040, adoption of other appendices of the Building Code without amendments, 1508, 030, adoption of other appendices of the Mechanical Code without amendments, and 1508, 060, adoption of other appendices of the Plumbing Code without amendment of Chapters 1504, California Building Code 2019 Edition, and 1508, California Mechanical Code 2019 Edition, California Plumbing Code 2019 Edition, respectively of Title 15, Buildings and Construction of the Rancho Mirage Municipal Code to remove certain dependencies to such state code.
And I will second that. This is Iris.
Okay, we have a motion and a second. Christie, will you please do a roll call vote?
Councilmember Kite?
Yes.
Councilmember Smotrich?
Yes.
Councilmember Townsend?
After reading that, yes.
Mayor Pro Tim Wile?
Yes.
Mayor Hobart?
Yes.
Motion carries 5-0.
Thank you, Christie. Okay, we will move on to item number 10. This item will be handled by Calvert-Pachau, who is our senior public works manager. And this is Calvert's first presentation, so I'll let you take it from here.
Thank you, Isaiah. Mayor and city council, the city has five special benefit zones born from development agreements between the property developer and the city, and one citywide median zone under Landscape and Lighting District 87-01. The district exists for the purpose of maintaining landscape and lighting in each specific zone. The zone within the district are assessed on a cost recovery basis, assessing parcel owners, the associated maintenance costs in a specific zone. The citywide landscape and lighting zone, which covers the city medians, is assessed to parcel owners citywide. The five special benefit zones are assessed only to the parcels receiving the direct and special benefit. To determine whether the assessment needs to be revised, the city contracts with Wildane Financial Services to prepare an engineer's annual levy report. The engineer's annual levy report factors the revenue and expenses associated with each zone and provide a cost recovery estimate for each zone. The recommendations in the attached engineer report are based on cost recovery and constitute minor adjustments. Today's motion do not constitute a final approval. They simply initiate the levy proceedings. A final approval is scheduled for the June 4th city council meeting. A public notice will be issued in the local paper noticing the June 4th meeting, a public hearing will be conducted during the June 4th meeting, allowing residents the opportunity to speak on the proposed assessment. Staff is recommending that the city council approve the three resolutions that are attached to this staff report. This concludes my presentation. I'm happy to answer any questions.
Thank you, Calvert. Let's move on to public comment. So if you're participating by phone and you'd like to speak on this item, please press star nine on your telephone now. Before we go to those on the phone, is there anyone here in the audience that would like to speak on this item? Seeing none, we'll go to those on the phone. Again, you would press star nine to speak on this item. Okay, seeing no public comments, we will close the public comments on this item, and I'll turn it over to the council for any comments or questions.
This is Townsend, and I have a question. Isaiah, this has nothing to do with the beautification program.
Correct.
Thank you.
Isaiah, this is Richard. Looking at some of the projected fund balances, there's quite a difference in the amount. Is that money that's accumulated over a one-year period of time or a longer period?
Since the life of the district.
So when we show one around $39,000 and one around $7,000, that would be primarily due to the basic charge?
Yeah, so the districts are very different in size and scope, and so that's why you're going to see a different level of reserve. And the reason we keep a reserve in these funds is to protect the property owners from big shocks or increases or fluctuation in the assessment themselves. So, you know, this is landscaping. So you could have one windy year and lose some vegetation, and it costs thousands of dollars to maybe replace some of that vegetation, as an example. Or maybe some of the plumbing goes bad, and you have to go in and redo some plumbing. So we keep a buffer depending on the size of these districts, meaning, you know, some of the landscape districts are very small, some are very large, some are basically a retention basin. So depending on the size of it, and then the dynamics of that assessment, you know, we use those reserves to not have to go in the next year if we have a big event and have a major increase in the assessment.
Okay. Do we evaluate those reserve funds on a yearly basis to?
Yeah, that's part of this, yes, that's part of this process.
Okay, thank you.
Any other questions or comments?
Nope.
Thank you, Calvert. Great job, great first presentation.
Congratulations.
Well done.
Welcome.
This is Ted. I'll make a motion that the city council adopt a resolution number 2020, next in order, initiating proceedings for the annual levy of assessments for the Rancho Mirage Consolidated Landscaping and Lighting Maintenance Assessment District Number 87-01 for fiscal year 2020/21, B, resolution number 2020, next in order, declaring its intention to levy annual assessments for the Rancho Mirage Consolidated Landscaping and Lighting Maintenance Assessment District Number 87-01 for fiscal year 2020/21, and C, resolution number 2020, next in order, for preliminary approval of the engineer's annual levying report for the Rancho Mirage Consolidated Landscaping and Lighting Maintenance Assessment District for the Ranch Mirage Consolidated Landscaping and Lighting Maintenance Assessment District number 87-01 comma for fiscal year 2021/21.
This is Townsend and second.
Thank you, we have a motion and a second. Christie, will you please do the roll call vote?
Councilmember Kite?
Yes.
Councilmember Smotrich?
Yes.
Councilmember Townsend?
Yes.
Mayor Pro Tim Wile?
Yes.
Mayor Hobart?
Yes.
Motion carries five zero.
Thank you, Christie. We will move on to item number 11, which is a resolution to get some grant funds for the city. And Jeremy Gleim, our Development Services Director, will be doing this presentation. Jeremy?
Thank you again, Mr. Hagerman. Thank you, mayor, members of the council. The LEAP Grant Program, LEAP standing for Local Early Action Planning, is a non-competitive program that provides one-time funding to cities and counties to update their planning documents and implement process improvements to accelerate housing production and help local governments prepare for the sixth regional housing needs allocation, or the sixth RENA cycle. Staff is proposing to apply for the maximum amount of funding, which is $65,000, to help offset costs associated with the update of the Highway 111 specific plan. In order to apply for LEAP grant funding, the city is required to include a resolution authorizing the application and receipt of the grant funds. Upon adoption of the resolution, staff will finalize the grant application and submit for state review. You may recall a similar process recently for an SB 2 planning grant wherein the city successfully applied for and was awarded a planning grant in the amount of $160,000. So provided we fill out the application correctly and submit it on time, we will be eligible for another $65,000. So that's the purpose.
Are you suggesting that's an assumption we have trouble with?
Yes.
Yes.
Only kidding, you don't see the smile on my face.
Thank you, Jeremy. Let's open up the public comment on this item. So again, if you're on the telephone and you wish to speak on this item, you may do so by pressing star nine now on your telephone. And we'll move to those that are here in the audience. Is there anybody that is here in the chamber that would like to speak on this item? Seeing none, we will go to our telephone audience again, press star nine now if you would like to speak on this item. Okay, seeing none, I'll close the public comment period and I'll, questions, comments from council members.
Jeremy, this is Richard. In one of the discussions, you mentioned the sixth regional housing needs allocation, or RENA. When does that process start and have we begun yet?
So we have begun. It started actually about a year ago where they started gathering information. And we actually advertised an RFP for a consultant to help us with the sixth cycle for RENA. So staff has already been working on this and it will come before the council likely in the next four to five months, maybe six months.
So actually you were working on this last fall, weren't you, as I recall?
Yeah, we've been working on it for quite a while for information gathering.
Okay, great, thank you.
Okay, are there any other comments or questions from the council? If not, now's the time for a motion.
I'd like to move that the city council adopt resolution number 2020 next in order authorizing application for and receipt of local government planning support grant program funds.
I'll second that, Ted.
Okay, we have a motion and a second. Christie, will you please do a roll call vote?
Councilmember Kite?
Yes.
Councilmember Smotrich?
Yes.
Councilmember Townsend?
Yes.
Mayor Pro Tim Wile?
Yes.
Mayor Hobart?
Yes.
Motion carries five zero.
Thank you, Christie. All right, we'll move on to our final item on the agenda, item number 12, which is an update for the council and several proposed actions relating to the city's response to COVID-19. So as this has been a standing item on our agendas, I'll skip much of the history here of dates and things of when we declared emergencies and get into what we need to talk about today. Those details are in the staff report for you or anyone else. So there are three specific actions that staff is requesting from the council. The first action is to adopt and ratify the May 12th, 2020 order requiring the use of face coverings. The second request is to, for the council to adopt and ratify the May 12th, 2020 order extending the moratorium on short-term rentals within city limits through June 30th, 2020. And then the third item being requested is that the council authorize the city manager to reopen City Hall and the Ranch Mirage Library to the public with health and safety modifications on Monday, June 8th, 2020. And then there is a standing item that the council can take any other action deemed necessary. So let's talk about the city facilities, so the opening of City Hall and the library to the public under modification. So at this point, based on where we are with our improvements that the council, our facility-related improvements that the council authorized at their last meeting, staff is anticipating that June 8th will be the date that we can reopen both our public facilities to the public. So to date, we have been closed as a protection measure for the community. And based on where we're at now with the modifications being proposed, I'd like to split the discussion up into the two facilities that we're talking about. As we're all aware, our parks are back open, so really just the next two facilities that we need to address are City Hall and the library. So let's do City Hall. So City Hall is more of the business side of the city. It houses our development process and much of the traffic in the City Hall is development-related. Throughout this time, we have kept the development process going. Staff has done a great job of adapting to these unique circumstances that they've been challenged with in accommodating the development community through an online process to allow them to still move forward. Our inspections have been performed and they've done a great job adapting. And when we do reopen, we are still going to offer those online services. So a member of the public can call in or email us and we're happy to accommodate that person without them having to come into City Hall. So I'll give a real example of what has happened recently. We did have a resident contact me via email and they wanted a residential golf cart permit that would permit them to drive their golf cart, their street-ready golf cart on city streets. So the typical process would be an inspection of the golf cart to make sure it meets the standards and then the issuance of the permit. So in this case, what we allowed this applicant to do was a virtual process where staff never had contact with the individual and then we were able to mail them their permit. So we are still looking for creative ways to serve the public safely and remotely. So we are still going to do that when we reopen to the public because we recognize that there are those in the community that are at high risk and should still be sheltering in place and we still want to accommodate them remotely even when we do reopen. However, we also are recognizing that as more businesses open up, it is also appropriate for us to open up to the public for those that wish to come here and interact with us. So that's the point of the opening of the facilities to the public. Our public counters are having the shields, the plexiglass shields installed. We're marking our floors for social distancing so that people waiting at counters have, again, a nice reminder that they need to social distance. We are requiring the use of face coverings. Again, we're an essential business and face coverings are required inside our building. We have the appropriate signage that remind members of the public that when they're entering our facility, that face coverings and social distancing is still required. We also will have courtesy hand sanitizing stations available for members of the public as they enter our facility. From a restroom standpoint, we are transitioning to all touchless automated water soap dispensers, paper towel dispensers. Many of the internal doorways within City Hall have been removed and we've gone throughout the city facilities and tried to reduce common touch points as safety precautions within our facility. So based on where we're at, again, we believe that Monday, June 8th for City Hall is a date that we can safely reopen to the public. Now, the library, they're going to have even more modification from their normal schedule operating procedures than City Hall. And the reason for that is just inherently, the library is a very busy place. And we used to do a lot of programming, which brought in many people into that facility. So we are really trying to balance with the library providing a place where people can come and check out material and then return to their own home and enjoy it there. So when the library reopens, it will not be the library that it was before that we all know and love. We won't be doing any programming. And again, much of the same improvements that I just talked about for City Hall are happening at our library as well. So there's going to be the appropriate signage that reminds people, hey, face covering is required, social distancing is required, and we're going to be setting occupancy limits for the library. And again, just inherently with not doing our programming, we don't believe that occupancy will become an issue. And, you know, if, kind of just to summarize the modifications quickly, is it's more of a library-to-go service. So we're really just open for a member of the public to come in and get their material and then go enjoy it at home. So along those lines, there will be no furniture for people to sit down on. Again, we're just simply opening so that members of the public can check out material and take it and enjoy it in the safety of their own home. So more of a library-to-go format. Our study rooms will not be available to the public. Our computer lab will not be available to the public. Again, when we open, it's really for the purpose of being a true library where you can get your material and take it home and enjoy it. We recognize, you know, that that is going to be challenging for some who maybe would like us or desire us to open to a more full capacity. But at this point, city staff has kind of analyzed where we're at and we don't believe that opening the library to any more capacity at this point is appropriate for the community. But we do believe that opening to the public and allowing people to come in and stimulate their minds again is a great thing for our community at this point. We obviously, like the community, want to keep providing the service that the community enjoys, but at this point, we have to be conscious of the health and safety of our community. And so opening the library in this library-to-go format is what staff is recommending. And again, that's going to be on, proposed by staff to be Monday, June 8th, 2020. And obviously throughout this period, the online resources have been available from the library, so those are obviously still going to be available. But what this does is, you know, our staff over at the library, just like here at City Hall, are great, they're well-trained, and we want to look for ways to accommodate people to their comfort level. So if a member of the public has a certain request, they'll be able to call into the library and one of our great staff will be able to assist them. And of course, we will always look for ways to do that safely for that individual based on their preferences. So again, it looks like right now what staff is requesting of the council and really more of a notification to the public since we have been asked about our library and when it's going to reopen. Right now, based on everything we're doing at the facility and on the operational side, that date is proposed to be Monday, June 8th, 2020. And we are looking forward to serving the public again in a very safe way. At our last meeting, the city council authorized the Great Plates Program and authorized the city staff to be the local program administrator. And what that did is it enabled us to execute this program instead of defaulting to a county-wide process. And, you know, the rationale behind that was we felt we could adapt and implement this program with a higher level of customer service than maybe relying on the county to do that. So the council authorized that at the last meeting along with the necessary budget and the costs associated with us running this program. And so it's been a fantastic program and I'm going to turn this over to Gabe Cotting, our Director of Marketing, who is going to give you an update on the Great Plates Program. Gabe?
Thank you, Mr. City Manager, mayor and city council and city staff. You know, last meeting you adopted this, you approved this program, within 48 hours we were delivering meals. And as of two weeks through tomorrow, the stats are as follows, 152 active participants have been signed up totaling 5,100 meals delivered. And that's an influx of about $112,000, a little over $112,000 to our local Ranch Mirage restaurants. And the city's cost after reimbursements of that is at the 6.25%, which is $7,000. So basically at a cost of $137 per meal or a total cost for three meals per the day for $4, we've, you know, we're able to apply, get a restaurant $66 per that meal set. So a big shout out to our staff who's been calling mobile home parks, you know, calling and handing out flyers at our own affordable housing and non-owned affordable housing in the city. So this program goes through June 10th. And so our restaurants, we have about nine restaurants, but we've been in contact with all of our local ones that are in our food access program as well. And these ones, we've really kind of targeted and worked with the restaurants that are locally owned and having the toughest time and being hit the hardest that don't have corporate support or don't have active drive-through in their business model. So it's been a huge success. The county has even recommended, we're the only city in the valley that has opted to administer it locally. And even the county is using the Ranch Mirage model as it advises other city-administered programs like this. We've kind of really set the standard and that's a credit to our, to our staff who is very passionate about this, both our affordable housing team that manage, our housing managers and that team, and then also our marketing team and our COVID response team. So I wanted to read you just a couple, you know, people have been over the top sending emails and very, very grateful. So I just want to read you a couple of emails that we received from residents. These are Ranch Mirage seniors that are 60-plus that are at risk for COVID and this helps them stay home, stay safe, and stay confident that they don't have to go out. And then also one of the restaurants that made the delivery. So on, on May 15th, we received the following email. "I am so pleased and grateful for my first big bag of meals, which was delivered about an hour and a half ago. Everything looks so fresh and appealing. I am eager to start on this program tomorrow morning. These yummy meals will be such a huge help for me right now. Kudos to whoever thought of this and thank you, everyone involved in the program, right down to the delightful young man who brought them to my door." Another email we received on May 15th says, "I want to thank you for being, I want to thank you for being a part of and helping to create and market this fantastic program. I had a knock on my door a couple days ago and two lovely young ladies presented me with four meals. I have enjoyed Italian meatball soup, spaghetti, meatballs, and a delicious chicken breast sandwich, and a beautiful Cobb salad. I am so grateful to you all. It is nice to know I can feel safe in my home and not have to go out to a grocery store and risk my health because of this program. Thank you, thank you, thank you." And this one was from one of our restaurants that jumped right in. I'll tell you, within 24 hours of us communicating with them, they sent us a menu and had already devised a delivery plan. And this is one of the first restaurants that made one of the first deliveries two weeks ago. "I'd like to thank you and let you know that my husband and son and I helped deliver the meals on Saturday. We were, we weren't prepared for what an emotional experience..." We weren't prepared for what an emotional experience it would be. Every single individual was incredibly grateful and had us on the verge of tears several times. Many people told us that they hadn't been eating enough. Many of them seemed frail and scared. I'm sharing this with, with you because I'm certain throwing this program together so quickly has been challenging for you and I wanted you to know that I've been to the front lines and seen firsthand how much this program is helping those in need. Thank you for what you do." So this, this program will continue through June 10th. And if there's any, any questions regarding the program, the Great Plates, I'm happy to answer those.
Thank you, Gabe.
Hey, Gabe, this is Townsend, and I want to tell you and share you, with you guys, that at my CVB meeting this week, I did bring up, do you know that Rancho Mirage is doing the Great Plates and how wonderful, and oh, Charlie, we are all aware of it. You guys are doing a fabulous job. So they are all aware of it and hats off to you.
Go, go team.
You got it.
Yeah, it's really, it's really been a powerful program and
Yeah, yeah.
There's many emails and feedback that we've received from it and there's some pretty powerful stories out there. And you know, it's during these difficult times, you know, sometimes you forget kind of how impactful we can be on an individual in our community. And this was a very nice reminder of that. And again, I would like to just take a second to recognize our staff who took your approval and in 24 hours started delivering meals under this program. And they've been running ever since and our restaurant community has responded as well. We have great business partners out there. Katie Stice at the Rancho Mirage Chamber of Commerce has been a great ally in this program. And it's really been an all-hands-on effort and it's paying off. And there's still opportunity for people to participate. So we have widely advertised this program to the community to try to raise awareness. So we've been doing e-blasts all over social media. We've been doing direct outreach to our communities, many of our mobile home communities, our HOA communities, where we can capture a large audience. So we've been trying to spread this program and make people aware of it. It really is powerful and it's, it's easy to participate is the great thing. So the way that this program was set up by FEMA is the eligibility requirements from a local program administrator standpoint, we're not collecting any confidential information from people. So it's not like they're turning over income records or anything like that. It's a very simple process for somebody to participate and the process recognizes the immediate need. This need is now in our community. And so the process is set up that way as well, where somebody can talk through on the phone with one of our staff members and they just have to attest that they meet the requirements that our staff members outline, and then they're enrolled into the program. So it is a very powerful program and from a participant's standpoint, you know, you're not worrying about turning over confidential income documents and things like that. The program recognizes that there is a great need and the need is now. So great job to our staff. If there's anyone that hears this message, you can find this information on our city's website. If you want to call in and get more information, you can call us at 1-877-652-4844. Once again, that telephone number is 1-877-652-4844. Or they can email us at greatplates@rancho mirage ca.gov. And this is also on the city's website if somebody wants to check it out. So I highly encourage those in our community that are in need to take a hard look at this program. And the meals from our restaurants have been fantastic. So thank you, Gabe, to you and your staff for jumping on this so quickly.
Isaiah, how long does the program run for?
Right now through June 10th. So the way that they're running it is it comes up for extensions and really they're looking at what is the state of COVID and what is the need? And then they have been providing extensions out. But right now, it's, it's approved through June 10th.
Do you have any indication as to when the restaurants might start being able to have meals inside?
So no definitive timeline. However, the County Board of Supervisors, Supervisor Perez, they've been very active with the state of California to get a variance based on our local health data. And that variance would allow Riverside County, based on our health data in the county, to accelerate further into phases, which would begin to enable limited occupancy inside restaurants. There's also a big movement to expand and make it easier for restaurants to utilize outdoor spaces. And so that is also in the works with ABC with their liquor license and things like that to encourage more outside dining. So that, Riverside County, the last update I got is they believe they're close to meeting the variance criteria. And one of the areas that they're lagging in is the positivity rate of the COVID tests that are being performed in the county. Currently, that positivity rate is a little too high to meet the variance standard. And listening to the county health department, they really believe that that's as a result of even though asymptomatic or somebody that doesn't have any symptoms or somebody that is feeling healthy, even though they can come get tested now, they aren't. Really only the sick are getting tested and so that's driving up the positivity rate. So if people are waiting until they feel like they have symptoms to go get tested, that's why our positivity rate is a little higher than what they think it truly is in the community. So county public health has been encouraging people to go get tested, even if they don't have symptoms.
Where is the testing area, where is the testing area near Central Rancho Mirage?
Cathedral City.
There's a new location, I think, now in Eisenhower.
And they also have it at Cathedral City at the library.
Right.
Yeah, and there's, you can go on the city's website and find that information. There's a link to, from the city's website, there's the link to the county website for the testing facilities. I know there's one in DHS as well, in addition to the ones that have been mentioned. There's obviously the one in NDO. So there's, and you know, you can call in and most of them are so available that you can get a same-day appointment. So in the beginning, you know, most of the news was dominated around testing, how they were being extremely limited with the testing and you know, you had to meet all these criteria and then tests were, you know, you couldn't get a testing window. So thankfully, the production and tests are more readily available than they were even just a few weeks ago.
Good. Isaiah, going back to the library, what's going to be the staffing situation there? Will it remain the same?
Yeah, so obviously, from an operational standpoint, things will be different. So duties are getting shifted around and part of our safety plan is in addition to wanting to limit the amount of public that is in the building, we also are limiting the amount of staff that are in the building. And that serves multiple operational purposes, but obviously one of them is also health and safety. And so we will have staff kind of stationed at different areas in the library, trying to balance the need for the service, but also not wanting to have a bunch of additional staff members in the building at that time that's unnecessary as well. So our operating hours, and this will be part of the city's communication, our operating hours will be different. And one of the ways that they will be different is we are typically open 8 to 5. We are going to actually close the facilities from noon to 1:30 every day that we're open. And the reason for doing that is to provide for a midday cleaning of our facility. So both City Hall and the library will close midday so that we can do a midday cleaning of the facility and all those common touchpoints throughout the facility.
Isaiah, why don't you tell everybody again how the return policy is being handled, the books?
So we've put together, and I'd like to thank Kofi Antabom, our Director of Administrative Services. He put together a 30-page policy of what is, the city is going to do for health and safety measures and in addition, what our employees are going to do for health and safety measures. So this policy, this 30-page policy essentially outlines all of these steps of what the city is doing to protect the public and our workforce. And so although it won't be business as usual, it's the, as we've seen with this, as we begin to loosen some of these restrictions, you know, it'll be done slowly. So when we first open to the public, you know, that'll be a very stringent, controlled environment. As we get experience with time and more data with the virus, when it's appropriate, we can start to loosen some of these modifications. But right now, in the beginning, our desire is to open the facility, but yet it'll still be in a modified capacity with health and safety at the forefront of what we're doing.
And the return book policy, you have something in place how the returned books are going to be handled?
Oh, yes.
Why don't you tell them about that?
Yeah, I'm sorry, I misunderstood your question.
That's okay. Go ahead.
So at our library, when they get material, they're going to go through a disinfecting process before somebody can check out that material again. So we really analyzed every aspect of our operation with a health and safety mindset. And so even down to when somebody checks out material from our library and they return it, even the materials themselves are going to go through a sanitation process before they're put back into circulation for the public.
Very good, thank you.
Okay, Isaiah, I have two questions, actually. One is, is there a recommended number of patrons that are going to be allowed into the library at one time? And if more people show up, are they going to have to wait out in front, especially in the desert heat?
Sure. So we're not including our staff. We took essentially the square footage and occupancy of the building and we took a percentage of that and then lowered that number based on how many staff we thought we'd have in the building. So right now, when we open the library, the occupancy is going to be held to 80 people. Now, 80 people sounds like a lot, but remember, our library is a very big space. In the event, and so part of this operational change that people are going to see, you know, when you walk in the door, there's going to be the signage for face coverings and social distancing and then the hand sanitizing sanitizer stations that are going to be available for the public. We're also going to have some staff members there that are tracking occupancy. So in the event that we start to get close to our occupancy number, our community room, which was our main room that holds 400 people for programming, obviously that's not going to be in use. If we get into an issue where occupancy is close, we don't want our residents waiting in 120-degree heat. So we're going to utilize our community room as an overflow and essentially a air-conditioned room where people can wait utilizing social distancing for their turn to enter the library. We practically don't think we will have to use that measure because of the way that the library is going to be set up. Essentially, the library is, is not going to be a place where somebody can go and hang out. The library is a library-to-go. So to have 80 people in the building that are simply going in and getting their material and they can check it out in advance, online, come in the door and just pick it up from one of our staff members at the desk to not knowing quite what you want, go pick out your material. So the amount of time that people will be in our facility will be very short. So although we don't think we are going to have to utilize the overflow room, we have that process set up just in case we're wrong.
Isaiah, I have a question that came up at my homeless committee meeting and it is, if it occurs, how are you going to handle the homeless people going into the libraries? And you do have a problem with homeless people, I was told. So do you have an answer to that or we even thought about it?
Yeah, so obviously, we're a public facility. Our staff is well-versed and well-trained in to handle, how to handle those situations. And part of our occupancy limits is a time limit on how long somebody can be in the facility. So again, being that we're removing all the furniture and much like everything else is a to-go format, the library is a library-to-go. And so this is not a place where somebody will be able to go and spend their day because that would violate the procedures that we're outlining. So our, we understand that our public restrooms are available and
That's the point, yeah.
Open to the public, but it's also not a place where you can set up camp and be there for eight hours.
That was the question, yeah.
Yeah, no, our staff is well-trained to handle those sort of occurrences.
Very good. I have another question off what we just talked about now, if I may, and it is, what are we doing to answer the questions of, Charlie, so-and-so restaurant is opened up. Charlie, this furniture store has opened up. Charlie, Revivals has opened up. What are we doing? Are these people going through City Hall and getting clearances or are they just opening? End of story.
Yeah, so obviously from the onset of this, enforcement of the mandate was not a local issue. Our role at the local level was to educate and inform. So from the beginning of this, the city established our COVID hotline and our COVID email where people can email questions, call in questions, or concerns relating to the mandate. And our staff have been responding to that hotline and to those emails and it's been working out well. So you know, I've said it before, you know, I think the Coachella Valley in general, but really even in Rancho Mirage, we've seen compliance with the mandates. I think everybody in our community, and that's, that's part of the reason why the counties for the Coachella Valley is able to get a variance based on our health data is because the public has responded very appropriately. And mandates are loosening. So I know it's very difficult for the general public to keep up with who can be open and who can't be open and it's very confusing. Even for us, it gets very confusing because we learn it in, you know, an update press conference and then
Yeah.
We're left trying to scramble to get that information out. So information comes out quickly and we've got to get that information out to the community quickly and our staff's been doing a great job with that. So so far, you know, our community has responded very appropriately and you know, I would anticipate that that will continue to be the case.
I appreciate that.
And we had a period of time between the county rescinding the face covering order and when we implemented it, you know, there was this period of time where technically face coverings weren't required. And you know, just my observations, when I would be out in the community, you know, many of our stores, grocery stores and restaurants were still requiring face coverings of their own requirement. And you know, from a resident standpoint, you know, you didn't see this mass exodus of wearing a face covering. I think most people view it for what it is, is it's a reasonable health and safety precaution that I think we all can take and it's not that big of, you know, an issue. So I think our community has responded very appropriately, both from a business standpoint and from a resident standpoint. So even with the face covering order, even if we did Uh, so, even with the face covering order, even if we didn't do it, I think you would still see the vast majority of our population com- using a face covering. Uh, so, you know, the, the community and the Coachella Valley in general, I think, has, uh, responded very well. And, obviously, y- you know, some of these decisions to close have extreme consequences on some of these business owners, and they still did it for, you know, the love of their community. And, we have some great stories, uh, that are in the media of our local business community, even though they're struggling greatly. Uh, they're doing wonderful things, uh, donating meals, uh, to medical professionals, to communities in need, and they've really stepped up, even though they're in a very tough situation. So, uh, y- you know, I, I think as we look around the Coachella Valley, um, there's been a great response to this, and people have really taken it for what it is, which is a, a, a social responsibility to do the right thing.
Exactly. Well, what I'm getting is, Charlie, if so-and-so is opening up, I'm gonna open up, and what, and, and I say, if you're asking me to tell you to go open up, I can't do that. You have to go by the guidelines that are there. So, some of these people are just taking it into their own hands, but the question is, are they going through City Hall? And it doesn't seem like they are. So, I think you've answered it. Thank you.
Okay. Okay, so, I have a question also, Isaiah, and this goes back to, uh, the golf cart permit, because I know people, even though it's summer, almost, uh, people are still buying homes, and they are still buying golf carts. So, you mentioned that there was an application that was submitted to have a vehicle, uh, made street safe. But, I believe you said that, that had to have some type of examination or checkout? Uh, who was doing that, and is that still possible, or is everything being done online? And, um, are people just putting off the examination of their vehicle to get a permit?
Um, so, you, uh, we are still issuing those permits, uh, as we always have, uh, and we are doing it remotely. So, the golf cart has to meet certain street legal requirements in order for it to be eligible for the permit, and that's really the purpose of the inspection. And so, those inspections are happening. Uh, the staff has just adapted, uh, to the current environment, and we can now enable those remotely.
Okay.
So, as an example, uh, the last one that we did, um, y- you know, there's been an offer to use, uh, FaceTime on your cellphone, and have them do a visual inspection of it that way. There's been an offer to, you know, leave it, the golf cart in your driveway, and we'll tell you when we're there. You can go in your house. Our code staff will walk around the vehicle, we won't touch it, and we'll do what we need to do. There's been the offer of submitting pictures. So, our staff is being flexible and, um, trying to, uh, accommodate, um, the health and safety of the person requesting the permit while still issuing the permit. So, it's done through our code compliance staff.
Okay, great.
And it's a free permit.
Okay. It's a free permit. Okay, people will be happy to know that. Thank you. That's the end of my questions.
And, uh
Isaiah, hairstylist and barbers, are they still not allowed?
Correct. They are, uh, not permitted to be in operation yet, per the governor's, uh, orders.
Which, do you know which phase they're supposed to be in? Phase two or three, or?
Phase three. Which, the, uh, according to the last press conference, the governor felt that we were probably still a couple weeks away from phase three.
Okay, thank you.
And then, uh, just to, uh, I, I'm not gonna spend much time on it, because we've talked about it. Uh, this was one of the first programs that we implement, implemented. We had the, uh, Ranch Mirage Food Access Program. On page twelve-dash-three of the staff report, we give the data, uh, for that program. So, we're up to forty restaurants with $286,000 in support to those restaurants, and the, uh, statistics are broken out on page twelve-dash-three of the staff report. Uh, with that, um, we have the, uh, three recommendations from staff. And, at this point, I'll go ahead and move to public comment. So, uh, if you're on the telephone, uh, you can speak on this item by pressing star-nine on your telephone now. And, before we move to those on the telephone, uh, we'll go to the, anyone here in the audience? Uh, is there anyone here that would like to speak on this item? Okay, uh, seeing none, let's go to those on the telephone. And, we do have one request to speak from Mr. Brad Anderson. Go ahead.
Thank you again, Brad Anderson. I live in the city of Rancho Mirage. Uh, just a few things I wanna comment on. Uh, I'm glad the, uh, the city parks are open again. Uh, my only concern was with that was earlier where there was coned off from traffic parking next to, um, off-rack Sinatra there. And, that's just because of handicap access, as a person that uses that park in a wheelchair, and that eliminated that person from using that perk. And, but, uh, again, we're past that, so now they can. So, and I wanna talk about the food access program, too. Uh, I know I was all in support of that at the beginning, before the, uh, the subcommittee got ahold of it. And, uh, I know it's really restrictive on a lot of businesses in the city, corporate-owned and drive-throughs and so forth. And, I would, well, I asked before to have that accessible to everyone in the city, all the businesses, but I can see that's not gonna happen. But, uh, I just, uh, I, I wanna urge that to happen, though, so, 'cause I know, uh, I, I think it's Private Country Club that actually got the funds, too, and, and, and that's, that's just, just, is disheartening. So, anyway, and, on to the mask. I, I'm, I'm opposed to the mandates. I understand, um, people will comply with that, because it is a social thing to do, and, but the mandate is, uh, is not necessary. And, uh, that's my point of view, and it is a feel-good courtesy, I guess you'd call it. Uh, I notice other, city leaders, Palm Desert, says it's a courtesy, it's a courtesy. But, also, it's, unless you're wearing an N95 or a respirator of some type, that's the only thing that's gonna prevent any kind of virus. And, I'm not getting emails from any certain people to, to, to shade me in one way or the other, but, uh, if you really wanna protect yourself, you'd wear that. Uh, but, the, the dense face coverings are so, non-scientific, it's, 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 I would call it shameful, but it, like I said, it's just a feel-good courtesy to other people. It probably poses more of a health risk to the wearer than not having it. So, I'm, I'm opposed to the mandates. I understand it's gonna take place anyway, but, and, uh, and like I said before about the mandate, it's, it put the business at, at increased harm. Well, probably, because, uh, you're, 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 encourage them to not serve anybody. It's like the plastic bag thing, I'm going off on a tangent here, but, uh, it's just, uh, it's, it's not, it's not nonsense, but, uh, it, it should be reviewed closely. And, again, people will do the right thing, and the right thing is to let the people make up their mind about this, and, and because there is scientific, you know. Thank you very much. Oh, I wanted to talk about the closed session item, too, when you come to that, just so, you know. Thank you.
Thank you, Mr. Anderson. Uh, is there anyone else on the phone that wishes to speak on this item? You may do so now by pressing star-nine. Okay, seeing none, I'll close the public comment period on this item. Um, I, I would like to just, uh, remind the council, uh, the, the blocking off of parking lots at our city parks was brought up. Um, as a reminder to everybody, that was, um, came down from our county health official. So, the city was just simply implementing the order from the county health official, when they came out and said, block off all parking to trails in city parks. The reason the county health official did that at that point is, there was a large number of people at parks and city trails where social distancing either was difficult or not happening. And so, kinda based on that, the county health official thought it was appropriate to have all the municipalities close off parking lots. Um, and, you know, there were a few occurrences where we had issues with Wolfson Park as well, the park that was specifically mentioned. We had a yoga group show up and do a yoga class in our park during, uh, all of this. And so, the county health official, uh, requested that all the municipalities close the parking lots to their trails, uh, and to their parks. Uh, we obviously implemented that order, and really, the purpose of that was, the people using the parks should be the ones that are in close proximity to it, and that was all designed to limit gatherings during a critical point, uh, during the, uh, community spread of the coronavirus. Obviously, when that order was lifted, we immediately went out and removed those, uh, parking restrictions. And then, uh, for the food access program, again, we, uh, the point of the food access program was, uh, our sit-down restaurants that aren't accustomed to doing, uh, takeout, uh, fast-service meals, really, we're facing a crisis, and at the same time, we saw, uh, the depletion of our grocery stores, and, uh, well, we all experienced that. So, the point of the program was to keep our restaurants open. Now, we did, as a city, implement two rule, or a couple, uh, obviously, requirements for that program, and then we also had some exclusions. So, the first exclusion was, uh, any restaurant that had an existing drive-through, because they're already set up with their drive-through and the business model, uh, for the restrictions in place as a result of COVID. So, they didn't need assistance from the city to stay open or adjust to that type of service model. And then, the second category that we exempted were the corporate chains. And, that one is because the corporate chains have access to capital that the mom-and-pop shops do not, and they make corporate-level decisions, not individual decisions. And, at the end of the day, uh, any assistance from the city would have been easily, uh, it would be very difficult to track that that assistance didn't get sucked off into a corporate structure. And so, that was the thought and rationale behind the city council's decision to exclude those two groups.
All right.
With that, um, are there any other questions or comments from council?
I do. On twelve-one, you referenced the adoption of A, B, C. You left out D, take any other actions deemed necessary. Was that correct, or you want A, B, C, and D?
Uh, so, we would only need D if the council wanted to take any other actions that staff did not identify.
What kinda actions would you think we would be listening to that would relate to this?
Anything that I can think of for the staff report.
Boy, you should be a politician. That was very good.
It, it's essentially just recognizing that this is an open action item, and
Okay.
Just because I didn't list it, doesn't mean that the council can't do an action on this item if they felt it was necessary. If you don't have anything, that's fine. It was just
You're always thinking of us, Isaiah. And I think with that, if you want, I will make a motion that the city council adopt A, B, and C, and I will read them, adopt and ratify the May twelfth, twenty-twenty order requiring the use of face covering. B, adopt and ratify May twelfth, twenty-twenty order extending the moratorium on short-term rentals within city limits through June thirtieth, twenty-twenty. C, authorize the city manager to reopen City Hall and the Rancho Mirage Library to the public with health and safety modifications on Monday, June eighth, twenty-twenty.
I'll second the motion. This is Richard.
Thank you. We have a motion in a second. Christie, will you please do the roll-call vote?
Councilmember Kite?
Yes.
Councilmember Smotrich?
Yes.
Councilmember Townsend?
Yes.
Mayor Protem Wile?
Yes.
Mayor Hobart?
Yes.
Motion carries five-zero.
Thank you. Uh, Steve, would you please summarize the closed session calendar before we allow Mr. Anderson to make his comment?
Sure, but before that, uh, Mr. Townsend, you might think your city manager should be a politician, or Mayor Hobart thinks I should be a comedian. So, not so bad.
I do, I do, and I do.
Oh, that's okay. But, uh, yeah, we gotta get those, we have to get those haircutting places open, because before this is all over, I'm gonna look like, um, Howard Hughes, and our city manager's gonna be in a haircut. So, there's a
Well, I'm going for a ponytail.
Hey, hey, Steve, anyone's welcome to come over to my house, I'll do you upright.
Hey, there you go, you got it made.
Uh, I'll, I'll use a bowl. So, the city council is at this, at this point, is now gonna recess in the closed session to confer with legal counsel pursuant to government Code Section five-four-nine-five-six-point-nine-D-one regarding the case known as State Rancho Mirage versus the City of Rancho Mirage. Mr. Anderson?
Uh, okay, uh, uh, Mr. Anderson, your line is now unmuted. Go ahead.
Great, thank you again, uh, Brad Anderson. I live in the city of Rancho Mirage. I wanted just to comment a little bit about your, your closed session item concerning, say, Rancho Mirage versus the City of Rancho Mirage. Uh, I noticed the legal counselor made a statement earlier in the meeting, uh, about a twenty-minute statement, uh, concerning the backstory on a lot of this information. And, and it came down to it technically, it looks like, but, uh, and that probably happens all the time with legal matters, so, I would just hope the city would, uh, uh, conclude this as soon as possible, so the residents of that area can, can move on to, uh, uh, with their life, uh, during this time of uncertainty, I guess, so. And, uh, and there's a backstory to all this, too, and I have my own backstory, but, uh, I will take twenty minutes. Thank you again. Bye-bye.
Thank you, Mr. Anderson. Uh, at this point, the, uh, council will now recess in the closed session. We are adjourned.